All right, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, January 22, 2024, meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. The time is currently 7:00 PM. Just to give you a little bit of a heads up before we get into the agenda, we do have a public hearing on the agenda, so there will be a little bit of a, some additional items before we get into the usual flow of our meetings, just so you know. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum of council present?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And we do have Councilmember James Singleton is appearing by video conference, so the remainder of councils present physically. That brings us to invocation and pledge of allegiance by Stephanie Otto, Commander of the Jeremy E. Ray American Legion Post 324.
Please uncover. Heavenly Father, we come before you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. That brings us to presentations. First, we'll have presentation of Police Department Employee of the Fourth Quarter and the 2023 Employee of the Year Award by Stephanie Otto, Commander of the Jeremy E. Ray American Legion Post 324.
Thank you. Give me just a second, I'm sorry. Each quarter, the American Legion Post 324 Jersey Village Police Department Employee of the Quarter Selection Committee meet to review a list of candidates selected by their peers. This is in no way a simple task, as all employees of the department are outstanding individuals that serve a greater purpose than themselves. The fourth quarter of 2023, the American Legion's selection Officer of the Quarter is Officer Arthur Moreno. Officer Moreno has shown a high-level professionalism, dedication, and productivity. He loves his job, and his work performance shows it. We thank you for your service and dedication to this department and our community. All these attributes work together to ensure that Jersey Village Police Department works smoothly and provides our residents peace of mind and makes Jersey Village a destination community. Many other officers were nominated this quarter. Thank you for your continued performance and dedication to our community. Officer Moreno. Village Police Department, in which fellow officers highlight their peers for many reasons. Each quarter, we convene and discuss each nomination and what makes an employee stand out, one from another. All of these nominations are great nominations, and it's truly humbling to read and discuss each one of them. All of these employees, all of the employees of the Jersey Village Police Department serve a position that comes with so much weight, and our utmost respect and appreciation is extended to them as a whole. Employee of the Year is a selection from the four employees of the quarter for that year. With this nomination, we consider each position served, each performance of that position, and the impact made by the employee within the department, the city, and ultimately the residents and the businesses within the community. With that said, the American Legion Jersey Village Police Department Employee of the Year Selection for 2023 is Arthur Moreno. Thank you for all you've done for our department and our city.
Next up, we have Presentation of Employee of the Month Award for January 2024, Austin Blee, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, tonight I am pleased to introduce to you, if you haven't met already, but and announce to you that our January 2024 Employee of the Month is Taryn Modisette. Taryn is more than just an asset to the department in financing utility billing, she is a role model for her colleagues. Taryn has exhibited exemplary performance exceeding the expectations of her role by proactively embracing many additional responsibilities. Her dedication extends beyond mere pursuit of personal growth. It is firmly anchored in a genuine commitment to enhance the team's performance and serve the community effectively. In her role, Taryn interacts directly with the public, a task that demands a distinctive skill set. A notable instance illustrating her outstanding competence occurred during the last few months with the changes and challenges around the water and sewer billing rates. Taryn is the first person to talk with people when they have concerns or questions on their water bill. With the recent changes, and with the higher-than-normal water usage due to drought conditions, the number of phone calls increased dramatically. Demonstrating remarkable initiative and efficiency, she was instrumental in not only promptly identifying and rectifying the error, but also took it upon herself to communicate the issue clearly to the residents impacted. Her approach in managing the crisis was commendable and reflects her exceptional problem-solving abilities and dedication to public service. Her contributions are invaluable and make her an ideal candidate for our Employee of the Month. Her contributions, particularly during the challenging situations, showcase her level of professionalism that we know and enjoy every day. Congratulations, it's my honor to name you the January 2024 Employee of the Month.
Congratulations again. All right, that brings us to, we have a public hearing that we need to conduct, so I'm gonna go ahead and call Item D1, Conduct a Public Hearing pursuant to Section 34-253 of Code of Ordinances, so that the owner or owner's representatives for the property located at 15830 Northwest Freeway, Jersey Village, Texas, may appear and show cause (1) why such buildings or structures should not be declared to be substandard, and (2) why the owner should not be ordered to repair, vacate, or demolish the buildings or structures. Based on the documentation I have here, it appears that all of the meeting posting requirements and notice to the relevant parties have been met. I now call upon the building official to give a report detailing the structural deficiencies and recommending that the structure located at 15830 Northwest Freeway be repaired or
Hello, Council, my name is Scott Williams, I'm with SafeBuild, and we are your third-party inspectors and plan reviewers for Jersey Village. We sent one of our inspectors out to inspect the building, and what they found, it is obviously in a state of disrepair and been abandoned. There are several issues with holes in the exterior wall that are allowing rodents and weathering to get inside the building. There is no electrical, no plumbing to the building, a lot of the wire, electrical wire is missing, it's probably been vandalized, is what our assumption is. The interior of the building is, the ceiling is collapsing in. We are unable to determine if that's from a water leak, if someone has got a water leak on the roof, or if someone has gotten into the building and physically done some destruction to the building. It is in a very sad state. Would need quite a bit of resources put into it to bring it back into a compliant condition. And as it currently stands, it is an attractive nuisance. Under the Property Maintenance Code, it's open, it's, someone could get into it if they were going to. Bare minimum needs to be secured, and probably some further steps taken to abate the building.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Now call upon any lien holders, mortgagers, or owners of the property who are present to give an opportunity to be heard and to address the nuisance issues as they relate to the minimum standards, including the scope of the work and financial capability of repairing the structure located at 15830 Northwest Freeway in Jersey Village, Texas. I understand we have a representative here, Donnie Schellenbarger? Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mayor, City Staff, Councilmembers, thank you all for having me. My name is Donnie Schellenbarger, I represent Speedy Stop Food Stores. We are a convenience store operator, proud owners of this unfortunate building. Operated for a number of years as a Chevron until TechStot, you know, expanded the 290 right-of-way there. I can't speak to the history of the property, as I haven't been with Speedy Stop that long, but I oversee construction on the project, and as Mr. Williams had said, yes, unfortunately, it has come to my attention with the condition of the building that it is, it is in need of repair. We have attempted to lease the building to try to find interested parties, obviously, you know, in its current condition, you just, you can't generate interest. So, your letter to us has spawned some interest. We currently have 25 convenience stores around South Texas, eight in the Houston market in particular, of which the, we own a parcel directly across Senate Avenue, that we plan to develop a large new format convenience store with a car wash. So, we have vested interest in the city of Jersey Village, and we're not intending to, you know, to make things worse for you guys, nor for ourselves, but we do fully intend. I did pass out a few, I apologize, I wasn't sure how many folks were gonna be here this evening. This was just a very initial, first rough draft, kind of a conceptual and design with the building, trying to meet, you know, parking requirements. I'm not sure, you know, again, we didn't spend a great deal of time going through every bit of ordinance checks and things, but it just, it got something on paper to kind of start the conversation. I'm sure we'll have to sit down with, you know, Building, Planning and Zoting Department and kind of go through that, initial checks, and we will go with that farther. But we're fully financially capable, we understand it's gonna take, it's gonna take a serious amount of capital, and we're prepared to spend that to rehabilitate this facility, both exterior and interior. I think our initial intention is to get the site paved out, you know, that meets the code requirements. We will get all utilities reconnected. I understand it had utilities up until the 290 right-of-way expansion, and at that point, then there was some back and forth between my predecessors and the city about reconnecting water with granting of a water easement. I'm not sure if any of that happened, I'm still digging into the details of trying to understand that. But, again, our intention is we want to breathe new life into this facility, whether it's a coffee shop, or a donut shop, or potentially an office space, we're still kind of mulling the options and open to, you know, suggestions. At the end of the day, I think we're gonna put 100% of the money into the site, the exterior of the facility, get all of the mechanicals on the interior of the facility up to speed in a, I think our thought is, is just an empty shell, to then do a, you know, lease, will-built-to-suit, because we hate to spend a tremendous amount of finances building out what we think it's gonna attract, and then we get a different tenant, and who wants to rip it all out and do bag? We're open to talking through that, again, just, you know, wanna do right, we're prepared to sit down with the building department and work through that process, so that is our intention. I hope that will be found acceptable, and look forward to working with your building department's team through that process carefully.
Okay, great, thank you very much. We have an opportunity for public hearing, and now call to order this public hearing, everyone desiring to speak on behalf of or against the recommended actions shall give their name and address, and will be given five minutes to present information during the meeting. The purpose of today's hearing is to provide for the owner or the owner's representatives of the property located at 15830 Northwest Freeway in Jersey Village, Texas, to appear and show cause (1) why the buildings or structures should not be declared to be substandard, and (2) why the owner should not be ordered to repair, vacate, or demolish the buildings or structures. The burden is on the owner, lien holder, or mortgager to demonstrate the scope of work required to comply with the ordinance and the time it will take to perform the work. I do not currently have anybody who has signed up to speak on this particular topic. Are there any members of the public who desire to speak on this topic?
I believe that's the same property.
It is, it's the same property, it's just we, the statute requires us to hold a public hearing where we receive comments from the public on this hearing, so it's, it's all part and parcel of the same hearing. So, I just wanna make sure, any, any, any non-interested parties, members of the public who wish to speak? Okay, seeing none. So, seeing as there's no members of the public who wish to speak on this item, I now close this public hearing on this particular building, this structure. Let's see, we are now, I think we would have closing comments on this, Lori, is that correct? Okay, so, so Mr. Schellenbarger, if you wish, there's an opportunity for closing comments on this, I don't know if you have anything additional that you wish to add?
Nothing more than appreciate your time, and when I spoke to, you know, working with the building department, that includes, you know, full permits and, you know, compliance to all things that need to happen in making this go right. We recognize, and I hope you guys understand too, it's, that doesn't just happen overnight, you know, the initial letter is very threatening, 10 days, this or that, but obviously, we're not just demoing it, we are gonna breathe new life into it, so, you know, we will follow the proper permitting and design review and pre-development meetings necessary to work this process. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we now have an opportunity for council, if council has any questions or wants to discuss this matter in more detail, now is the opportunity to do so.
How long, when did we finish? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jen, you're there.
I was just curious, when did, can somebody remind me the years of the Highway 290 expansion? I'm just trying to, was it 12, 2012? So, has this been in that, this has been in that state since 2012, correct?
It's progressively gotten worse. I was listening to his comments, he recognized that the building would require significant capital.
Oh, James, I think you lost sound. For some reason.
You were gonna rehabilitate this building.
Sorry, James, can you repeat that one more time and cut out about 15 seconds in?
When the building representative talked, I was wondering if, did he have, give any indication that they were interested in rehabilitating this building? I heard a lot of plans for redevelopment, and I know the parties have changed, but that is the exact same talk that I heard 12 years ago when this Chevron was shut down. Speedy Stop approached the city and applied for a permit to build a new facility, and when they learned about our codes, they elected not to build. So, are they intending to redo this building, or is all that redevelopment discussion about
To address your question, sir, there are two separate properties, you're kind of muddying them across the, it would be the north side of Senate Avenue is a new development bear tract that we own two parcels that make up just shy of three acres. That will, in fact, be a new development with a new convenience store and a new tunnel car wash. Nothing related to this property that is on the docket for today's discussion. There is plans for that, but the market's constantly changing. COVID hit in 2020, we reallocated assets and capital to other projects more important, but related to this property in particular, we fully intend to rehabilitate this property as it sits.
So, the building that we're currently talking about, not trying to muddy this up, I'm talking about the specific structure we're talking about, you intend to rehabilitate.
Yes, sir. It won't be as a convenience store, because we can no longer have a fuel canopy in front of it, and nor does it make sense to have a fuel canopy beside it or behind it. It will be repurposed into an entirely different occupational use. What exactly that will become is hard to say, again, because until we give it some new love, reface it, you know, repave it, put landscaping, kind of really make it look attractive, and then put a for-lease sign on it, then we drum. You know, again, we've, we have a few properties that had similar circumstance in the San Antonio market. We've had very, very good success with a coffee shop, we've had good success with a donut shop, because those, those folks don't need the big, pretty frontage with the huge, deep front parking lot like, like other facilities do. They, people wanna get in, grab their donuts, grab their coffee, and they're right back out. They don't as much care about what the facility looks like, but that doesn't mean we're not gonna make it look pretty, even though it hugs the road tighter than most would like.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your questions.
Any other questions for the representative, for the property owner?
I think the question I had was alluded to by Councilmember McCray was with the, and you may not be able to answer it, sir, because of your tenure, but just the distance, whether it was 2012 or 2016, because I remember driving to work in the Galleria and having to come by 290, and 290 being a bear always, whatever the time way, it's a long time ago from 2024, and just, yes, COVID happened in 2020, so was this, you know, where on the radar was this of Speedy Stops, and why was something not done prior and just let the building languish, other than a quite bullish paint job?
Yeah, I apologize, I can't speak to what happened prior to my tenure, starting pre, right immediately prior to COVID, but I do know that our company had gone through a number of organizational changes, they had another portion of our entity merged with another, they had a major downsizing, kind of, a number of things had gone on over the five years pre-COVID that I think just kind of unfortunately put it on the back burner. I hate to say that, I know, you know, you guys love your town, and we do as well. Again, we have interest and intention to continue to be here, not only with this, you know, thorn in everyone's side, but, you know, more importantly, for the nice, new, big, clean, pretty development eventually to happen across Senate Avenue. So, I don't know, but our intentions are right now, under new leadership. I can't speak to any, anything in particular, you know, prior to my happenings, but we intend to make right here.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I do, I feel like it's important to point out that in 2021, several members of this council, not all on council at that point in time, and James, and with multiple members of this community got together and went and cleaned up that lot and the area surrounding that building, because the owners were refusing to clean it up, and we got tired of looking at tires and broken glass, and things that were, quite frankly, dangers to the people that live in this city. I just, I just find it very concerning that we're supposed to trust that this is gonna happen when you guys couldn't even keep your lot clean, even though from my, what I recall from this, the city did contact them multiple times about the problems on the lot, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, we sent them several letters, and we were getting ready to go to court, and then the citizens stepped in, and several of you here stepped in and cleaned it up on their own.
And there was, oh, all right, that was loud. There was more than one cleanup attempt that we've did, several, and yeah, we were unable to get ahold of the tenant to help us in any way for that. to get ahold of the tenant to help us in any way from that.
I, I apologize for that on our behalf. That was not in my department. I oversee new construction and/or major renovations. At the time, that's handled by our real estate group, and, and I, I guess I extend apologies on behalf of those individuals that I wasn't aware of it. So I, I don't know why they didn't handle it, and for that, I'm sorry. I, I didn't hear about this, but I will take this back to leadership and ownership and make sure they are aware of that, because I'm not sure if they were even aware that you guys chipped in as a community to, to do so, and that's, I, I agree, that's, that's not right. We should have taken care of it ourselves. So it is in my plate now, so I, I intend to follow through with seeing this, seeing this happen. Thank you for your question.
Any other questions from counsel?
I mean, I don't have any questions. I think I'm just confused on how renovations would fix this building. Just knowing what's been inside of it the last 12 years, you know, with my own eyes, with plumbing and the ceiling, and I mean, I guess I'm having a hard time seeing how this can be turned into a swanky coffee shop with what I know is inside and outside needs to be repaired. There is not a plan for a tear down?
No, ma'am, no tear down. The problem is with a tear down, then we lose all setbacks and we have no property to be able to put anything of value on that little bitty shallow net of a property that could be developed. So our only option is to rehab the existing structure. As for how to go about the interior, I mean, a full gut. I mean, take the ceilings out, take the floors out, take the walls out, and start over. I mean, HGTV is a very popular, you know, show, you know, it's amazing what can be done with the shell, a good shell of a structure, and start over, new windows, new paint, new stucco, new siding, new roof, you know, new mechanicals. Again, I, it won't be a convenience store any longer.
Not to put you on the spot, but have you been inside that building?
I have driven by it, but I, I've not personally been in it. I have seen that, yes, the, the grid ceiling is falling down because it, AC or electric was ripped off by squatters or thieves, petty copper thieves off the roof. Power, I don't know why power is not on the building, but with power not being on the building, anything will fall apart. A home, a commercial structure, those ceiling tiles, these included, will, will start to collapse over time in high humidity environment, and that's, that's what's falling down. It, it does look terrible inside. I've seen pictures from my team, and it's, it's not a pretty sight, but we're here to start working through that process intentionally.
Do you know if anyone with Speedy Stop or on behalf of Speedy Stop has been in the building within the last six months?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we have a maintenance tech that floats around this market and, and another market that handles rocks being thrown at windows either intentionally or lawn mowers slinging rocks, breaking windows, temporarily boarding them up until we can get the glass company out to re-glaze them to, to keep the walking shell of the building somewhat pretty insecure. Incidentally, one happened over the weekend, and he was there today reboarding that window temporarily, and have already talked to, our maintenance team has engaged the glass company to go again, take care of that.
Okay, so, so the, the discussion of actually rehabilitating this building is with knowledge of its current condition?
Yes, sir, that is correct. Completely current.
Okay, just want to be sure.
Yes, sir. Yeah, the, I mean, whether the building was ready to go or, or completely falling apart, it, it will be a gut out, you know, a full gut out and start over, which we understand means you've got to bring it up to electrical code, HVAC code, to plumbing code, et cetera, et cetera. We are, we are fully prepared to do that.
Okay, any other questions from counsel?
Well, yes, I think we're going to move forward here in a minute. I, I'm sure that others are probably going to agree with me that I, I find there's evidence of a substandard building. You said that you want to rehabilitate this building. We're going to make, the ordinance provides for some stipulations. What do you, how much, how many days do you believe you need to submit for permits for repair and to provide a plan to the city? Because we're going to have to make that decision here in a few minutes.
That's a good question. I'm, I'm used to handling new construction where you come sit down with a building department as a kind of a pre-development meeting and just go over concepts and, and kind of let all the various departments, plumbing, HVAC, electrical, fire, building official, sort of, you know, initially tell us before we spend tens of thousands of dollars on, on architectural fees and engineering fees, fully designing it, just making sure we're, we're moving in the, in a general right direction that's generally agreeable by all. And then once we have that pre-development meeting, then we fully engage architecture and/or engineering. I, I've not handled a major commercial renovation like this, but I, I would expect that process normally takes easily two to three months, depending on how swift the, the review process with the city building department is. I've seen some that take longer because the city review process is just arduous. Not saying that you're...
Yeah, I've been in construction for several years. It's not for the review process, it's to submit the applications. So assuming that you're able to get a, a pre-development meeting, how many days do you think it's going to take to submit a permit?
To submit for a permit? We could probably have that ready in 30 to 45 days loosely.
Thank you.
Do you have...
And I didn't catch the gentleman on the TV's name, I'm sorry.
All right, that's, uh, Councilmember James Singleton.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I just, I didn't know who he is.
No worries.
I was just curious, and I don't know if I can even ask this question, that's why we have a, a very fancy lawyer here. The, do you have any idea on the estimated cost of this refurbishment is?
Right off the top of my head, no. I just got this, this preliminary over the weekend and had a quick chance to, to glance at it when I got into office this morning. There's going to be a tremendous amount of concrete paving to do, not to mention the building facade, you know, the gut out on the interior to bring it to a shell. If, if I were to guess, I don't, I don't want to guess because I, I know I'm going to be off. I've tried doing that in the past, and I'm always shy.
I just want to make sure, I mean, are you even aware that HCAD has that building valued at $379,000?
We are, yes, ma'am.
Okay, it's just, that's a...
The, the building's valued at $999? The land is the remainder of that number.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I misunderstood. So $909?
$999.
Thank you.
So, quick question on that. Does that mean that any improvements require that if it's 50% or greater, that, that they have to meet up to current code standards and rules?
They would definitely have to meet all the current code standards and rules and everything. I think the ordinance you might be thinking about is the 50% threshold of the value. That applies in the flood zone? I don't know exactly right off the top of my head where, if the flood zone is there, I don't believe so, but I can look.
I've, I've acknowledged that we intend to fully bring the building up to code, so I'm, we're not trying to skirt that.
I don't think you are. I mean, from the looks of it, there's a lot of work to be done. You'll probably, any improvement is a good improvement there. Another question, and I don't know if it's answerable at this time, at what point or how, what decision would be made by Speedy Stop to say, listen, the investment in this property is, there's not going to be worthy of a return, and it's just best to raise the building and put the land up for sale, and then invest everything, what we have in this other property across the street? And maybe, I don't expect you to answer that and give away any trade secrets or whatever, it's just something that crossed my mind.
Yeah, no, great question, thank you for asking, because that is a process that we will go through once we come up with a, a full design and then hammer it out with getting a few loose budget estimates from kind of the key contractors, the, the shell, the roof, the concrete, the, the gut out, and kind of estimate the interior finish out so that we can run a cost analysis on it, knowing what some of our other facilities, non-convenience stores that we, we own and lease out are making. That's, that's above my pay, pay scale, but I know they will, they will run that analysis before we would fully go to submit for a permit, because you could be right, it, it might hit that point, I, I don't know, but that's, that's on our, on our real estate and, and leadership side that is outside of my scope of duty.
I think that's my main concern, is that this will need such a high level of fixing that they might do things, I don't want to sound in portis, but do things on the cheaper side to save money because of the amount that they have to do, not that they would cut corners, but might not do the most aesthetically pleasing thing because it's going to cost so much money. So that's concerning, or that was, is one of my concerns. My second thought is, you said you were not going to do a total tear down because you would lose the, the front part of the, the setback, so you would have to build further back?
That's correct. I, I don't know the, the ins and outs of that, but...
So I, I think just as, as someone who owns property, if I knew that keeping this to code meant keeping my investment, I'm, I'm just bewildered on why they would let it get to this point where they need to tear it down, and then basically, this land is not worth a building anymore. I don't know. This is, and you said you got this last week?
The, this, the preliminary sketch that, that you're looking at, yes, we, my real estate team has been kind of working through that, and that fell in my hands over the weekend. So we, we discussed, made sure that it initially meets kind of what our intentions are, again, kind of fall on similar scenario of, we had to go through the very same thing a number of years ago in San Antonio, and that one did ultimately end up turning into a, a successful leased property on a long-term lease, so we're, we're starting at that point. Not to say that's where it's going to land, we'll, we'll go through the pre-development process, you know, let the parties or powers that be review and make sure that it's, you know, meeting all acceptances, and, and if it does, we will proceed.
Any other questions from counsel? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you all for your time.
Sure. Okay, before we begin discussion on how to proceed, it might be helpful to understand what our options are going forward.
So, take everything that you've heard here, everything you've researched in the past. Your motion needs to have two parts to it. The first is that you're going to find this building actually substandard or not, and if it's not substandard, you will not have a second part. If it is substandard, second part of your motion is basically, what measure are you going to put on the owner to make the building safe, make it not substandard? I would set a timeframe, whether it's months, weeks, days. I believe your code talks about securing, evacuating, which is not a, a situation here, or demolishing. So what, whatever your need, whatever remediation measure is needed, that's the second part of your motion.
I think I'm going to make this easy, and, oh, go ahead.
I was going to add one thing. If you do go over 90 days for your timeline, you will need to set some reporting requirements, and I would just recommend it being like a, a rolling item on every regular meeting agenda, that they come back and they're giving you updates. And that's only if it's post 90 day, more than 90 days.
Now my memory's being refreshed about the, that, that home over on Philippine Leeds. Okay, so, so the, I think, maybe, maybe I'm being presumptuous here, but I think we're all in agreement, and it sounds like no one has disputed the fact that this is a substandard structure. I think the, the question that the council has to determine is to, what steps do we impose, or what, what conditions do we impose in order to rectify the situation? I'm sorry, Lori, go ahead.
I'm sorry, are we on item two now, or still? Okay, so we're calling item two?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's go ahead and just for, to be sure that we're, we're, we're going to, we are moving over to item D2 to consider ordinance number 2024-01, finding this structure at 15830 Northwest Freeway, Jersey Village, Texas, 77040, legally described as TRS 16B and 18D, Fairview Garden Annex, Section 3, HCAD 064248000039. The quote-unquote "property" to be substandard and a public nuisance, ordering Speedy Stop Food Stores Limited or the true owners of the property to abate the substandard and dangerous structure on the property, authorizing the city to demolish the structure on the property if owner fails to abate the substandard and dangerous structure on the property, authorizing the city to assess a lien against the property for the cost of the demolition, making other findings and provisions related thereto. Now, I do show that Misha Johnson, Community Development Manager, is listed on here. Misha, do you, do you have something you want to add regarding the, this ordinance?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, Misha Johnson, Community Development Manager. I was just going to say we finished the public hearing, so on your second page of the ordinance, those are the options that we were given by the city attorney, and if, you know, we were seeking direction for what you guys would like to move forward with.
Great, thank you, Misha.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, what do we want to do?
I, when is our March meeting? March 18? It's after spring break, so March 18. I think our February meeting would be too soon to ask for any, it's February 12th, which is three weeks from now. So that's too soon to ask for any definitive work other than a report or an update provided to the city secretary by the Thursday prior of any efforts or updates that the, the owner has, has gone through. And then I think by, within, you know, two months from now, there should be significant decisions and effort, and by the sounds of it, possibly permits, plans and permits pulled. I, I, those would be the guidelines I'm thinking of. I, I don't have anything definitive to apply to that. I, I'd say we can give them some rope, but not much.
I think that's awfully generous of you, because it's been, like we were talking about, God, I'm so bad at math, 10 years? 12? 12 years. And it's, it's not getting better. They haven't done a thing. They have ignored every single time the city has reached out. They have ignored, they've never done anything. I mean, it's god awful, and it's an eyesore. And then if you look at what they presented, this to me doesn't look better. I mean, it just, this is, this does not look any better to me. And I'm confused about the setbacks comment personally, because when I look at the, what do you call that?
Sonin ordinance? Or the...
When you, when you look at the plans overhead, like when you look at this, I think that there's plenty of room for any, on that property, for any other options.
The setback requirements are 25 feet on each side of the building. It does look like at the front, they're very close to that 25 feet, but the other three sides, there are just plenty of space beyond that 25 feet.
So I struggle with that to be the big issue for choosing not to knock it down, because I, I just, it's, it's such an eyesore, it's a safety issue. I feel like they've gotten 12 years to do something, and they've chosen not to, but that's just me.
So I agree that property has been sitting for 12 years, and I think we're all ready for something to happen with it, and it's gotten progressively worse lately. I think they should provide a fence within 10 days. That's what we did with Motel 6. Provides immediate resolution. And then if they want to rehabilitate it, any property owner should have that right. I think that we know this property far more intimately than evidently they do. And 60 to 90 days to submit permits or demolish.
I think what James just described is fair. I mean, it has been an eyesore for a very, very long time, but to his point, the property owner does have a right to obey it. We just need some guarantees it's going to get done, and it's going to get done in a timely manner. We don't want it sitting here for another 12 years.
I mean, the, the assurances we have that, that if they decide... I mean, the, the assurances we have that, that if they decide, if they actually decide to undertake the cost of rehabilitating the structure, which I think, if they were trying to cut costs, they would knock it down and rebuild it. I, I think that if they truly are interested in retaining the footprint because of the setbacks, then yeah, it's going to cost them a lot more. But that's why we have our codes in place, and that's why we have our, our building officials, is to ensure that, that whatever work they do is actually up to code. And so I, if they're going to go ahead and go with that, I'm, I'm pretty confident that either they're going to do it according to code, or they're not going to get an occupancy certificate. And we're going to be right back here dealing with this. So, all, all the incentive in the world is on them to do it right. Otherwise, they're going to wind up spending a whole lot of time rehabilitating a building that they can't make a dime off of, in terms of retail sales. So, it's a shame that it took going to this length to get somebody to step up and say, okay, we're going to straighten this out. But here we are. I think, and I apologize, did you say during your, during, during the discussion, did you say that you thought it would take approximately 60 days for a permit, or 45 days? 30 to 45 days?
Detail plans together, yes, or easily 30 to 45 days.
So, so if we're, if we're looking at, when, when is the March meeting again?
But there's spring. At next week, so I'm...
Okay, so, let's make sure we're standing on the record. The, I think 60 days gives enough time. And I believe it was the 90-day period at which we needed to have, needed to at least have a report at a minimum. So perhaps for the April meeting, that I believe would be within the 90-day period? So if we require a permit to be issued, or to be pulled within 60 days of today, and then require a report by the April meeting, would that?
I, I want status updates before every meeting, on where they are. I want it for February, and it doesn't require an appearance. I know they're based in Victoria, and you probably, so we, we can, we can just get a status report. It can even be on consent, if that makes, or we can talk about it. I, I don't care. But in time of the February 12th meeting, and then the March 18th meeting, you know, or five days, five business days before those meetings.
I was just going to say, for a little bit consistency, there's seven meeting, or seven days before the council meeting, so the Monday prior to the actual council meeting is when, from a staff level, we prefer having that information, so we can get it in the packet.
Once it's rehabilitated, we're looking into the future, what's to say it's not going to sit empty in that same spot? And then we're not like, how many years did it take us to get to this point for the empty building? I just don't want it to get so far where we're finally to a point where we can do something, and then set back with the same problem.
I just want your focus to be that we're, we're making the building safe. It's not, no longer a substandard structure, so don't look too far into what could be developed there. Here, just keep your, kind of keep your focus on the, the building itself.
I mean, at the end of the day, we have, we have the same tools available to us always, so.
I just want to make sure that those blanks in the ordinance, each one is addressed. So I don't know if you want to go through those, Mayor, because I'm going to need to have something.
Page 23.
Sure. So, yeah, we're looking at, yeah, page 23 in the packet, at least based on what I've heard from council at this point. Obviously, item A, it's substandard, unfit, all of that. Subpoint B, I believe, council member Singleton mentioned 10 days that they would secure the property and put in necessary fencing. That seems reasonable to me.
Wait, wait, can I get clarification on the fencing? What are the requirements for fencing? Because I don't want to see an orange plastic fence.
According, well, according to the, according to the ordinance, it says, so if it were written that, the way I'd suggested, it would say, within 10 days of the date of the ordinance, and they would have the date, "The owner shall vacate the property and secure the property by fencing approved by the official, and the building shall remain vacated and secured until a certificate of occupancy is issued by the official."
Who's the official for this?
Building official.
Can we get some clarification from the building official, what type of fencing it would be?
Or what would you consider appropriate?
What would you consider appropriate, in this case?
Typically, this is, what you would see is like a construction fence. So if you go to a construction site, and they have the temporary chain link fence up, and with the sandbags laying on the, on the legs to hold the fence up, that's, that's kind of a, that's what the fence looks like when you're trying to secure a property.
And keep in mind, the ordinance says, "Secure the property and put up the fence." So the fence is not the sole...
Oh, I under, I'm fully aware of what that is, but I've got some clarification. It sounds like we can be specific on the fence. And I think we need to be specific on the fence, because it already looks bad. It doesn't need to look worse, or draw attention to the fact that it looks worse.
Securing the building would be akin to, like plywood of windows, right?
I mean, let's be clear. I don't, I don't know that the securing measures are going to make it look better. What we just want to make sure is that no one who's not supposed to be in there goes in there. I think the term...
Oh, I completely understand that. An orange plastic fence is not a barrier.
I agree. I think, I think the key is attractive nuisance. And usually, in attractive nuisance, you're thinking, you don't want kids going in there, for example, that sort of thing, someone who might go in there and get hurt.
An orange plastic fencing would not be adequate. It needs to be a chain link top fence.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, so we can specify that. The following, okay, so as we're going through, just to make sure we, we fill in the blanks, or at least we cover what's in the blanks. Subitem C says, "Structures on the property shall be abated or demolished by the owner or designee within blank number of days." I think that's sort of the, the end goal. So, keeping in mind that we can set a number, and then if we think that progress is being made, but that we, based on what they learned, that it's not an appropriate deadline, we can always change it.
Yeah. And I know Justin had put this together based on a previous one, so if you need to move things around, you know, if we want our 10 days, here's how many reports we need, here's what needs to happen within 90, and if after 90, it's going down.
So we can adjust from this. We don't have to keep this form the way it is. So maybe we just need to make that adjustment.
Yeah, I, I don't want to wait nine months for construction like we did with other properties.
Oh, no, I agree.
I think we need to have very clear-cut guidelines and very specific processes here.
In my mind, I think, I think 180 days, beginning to end, period, is probably an appropriate deadline. Meaning that 180 days from now, it is ready to be leased.
I think that if there's a way we can do this, where we have the option to extend it to 180 days after 90, because I think by April, 90 days on April 15th, which is the next council meeting, I want to see significant progress in terms of permits, plans, and probably something beginning already.
I agree. I don't think that stuff takes near as long, if you're actually motivated, and you want to get stuff done, and you're showing that you're actually serious, I think you can get your stuff done.
And then, at that point, I'm willing to extend it, understand how long construction and reasonable construction timeline is.
So just to be clear, I want to make sure we've got the timeline here straightened out. So, we're talking 45 days to permit, 90 days to completion?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm saying, if we're going to give them 90 days, and that may not be April 15th, in fact, I looked up 200... 90 days from today is Sunday, April 21st, so...
And we meet on April 22nd.
We, we could have a meeting on, do we? I thought it was 15th. Holiday?
Holiday, there's a holiday on the 15th, so it's the 22nd in April.
Well, perfect. Yay. It all works out. I would say, we need significant, now that's an arbitrary term, but we're going to have to have permits, and timeline, and a project plan by that point. I mean, if they're going to construct by 180 days, then they should certainly have those things by then.
Should construction not have started at that point?
Not without permits.
If permits are in, what would we say, 45 days? If permits are 45 days, construction should be able to begin at 60, correct?
Now, there can be, I, we've had building officials go back and forth, work hand-in-hand with, with architects and, and customers, where they're still working, actively working on permits, but haven't issued them yet. And it's not because of substandard application, it's just because, whatever reasons. So, so I want to maybe be flexible. They could be ready for permits by 45 days, but...
Austin, do you have any input?
It's going to be a spec space. It should not be that, it shouldn't be that hard to permit. It's less than 30,000 square feet, so you eliminate several more complicated parts of it. It shouldn't be very hard to submit a spec space permit.
Maybe we can ask our building official, what, what seems to be a reasonable timeline based on his knowledge of the property. It is limited as it may be.
In my opinion, I would set it up with your, and it's confusing when you start talking about days and timelines, right? Everything needs to be from a set date to the date of the ordinance. What I've seen work good in the past is you give, like, 10 days to fence the property. Then you're going to give them 30 days to demolish, do the interior demolition, and to secure the building. That way, that can, they can go up on the roof, pull any roof equipment off, they can secure any holes that are in the roof, or they pull an AC, or a vent hood off the roof, a vent fan off the roof. All those can be secured. Then you've given them 45 days to come up with a, with a plan and to submit plans into the city, right? That's, that's 45 days for them to determine what they want to do with the space, what's going to be on. Once those plans come in, then that's where Councilman Wasson was, was talking about. There's, there's back and forth, okay? Because what they're, what, what they want to use the property for then has to go through the ordinance, parking, landscaping, all those things, to make sure there's enough room to accommodate everything. And so that's the back and forth. So I would probably give a little bit of time, as long as they are active and involved in, in pursuing the permit. Now, once the construction starts, then you can say another, you know, 45, 10, probably 90 to 180 days on the construction independent on what they're, if they're doing a, just a shell building, then that's going to be real quick to turn around in, in, in less than 90 days. If they want to do a build-out, rooms, restaurants, walls, whatever, then that may take a little bit longer. But that's kind of how I would, I would, I would, I would word the ordinance, to where that way you have deadlines and times, and then at any point, you could say, hey, at 90 days, come back and show us your progress. Where you're at with the building, where you're at with your plans, we can determine if they're making good progress or not making good progress. And at that point in time, council can then revisit the demolition order, if it's most...
What about, so it sounds like to me, so we could do 10 days to secure, then 30 days for permits. No, I'm sorry, you said 30 days for...
Well, 10 days for the fence.
For demolition.
10 days for the fence.
10 days for the fence, 30 days for demolition.
Interior demolition.
And then 45 days for permits. So that, but that all starts on day one. It's not, and it, it's not, you don't get extra. And then can we not set something saying that you have 45 days for construction once you receive your permits?
So I guess the, the question I have is, do, do we have to set the full timeline now, or, okay?
Yeah, if, if, if you want to go out as far as the 45 days for a plan submission, and then, and then once you get your approval, we can kind of come back and pick another 45 days, 30 days, whatever it needs to be, and, and go from there.
I think that sounds better.
Yeah. Because they'll have an opportunity to understand what it is that they want to do, see if they can get it approved. And then, at that point, we can set a reasonable deadline based on what that plan is.
And then that pulls, that would be the April meeting, correct? Because if we start it from today, April's 90, what's 45? What's... So the March meeting. So we could have...
45 days is March 8.
Okay. So then by the March meeting, they have to have, because that, that would be the 8th, which is when they would have to have the information into council, or into the city staff. And then on the March meeting is when we could, that would be when we can make the decision from then on, on progress?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
So 45 days from today is March 7.
Well, we could make it March 8. Right?
Yeah, we meet on the 18th.
The 7th would be a Sunday, so...
The 7th is a Thursday. March 7th is a Thursday.
Yeah. And technically, our order starts tomorrow, so...
Okay.
Either way, I think by the time they submit their March report to council on March 11th, or to the city, and then it would appear on the council agenda on the 18th, I think they should be well within whatever guidelines we're, we're asking.
Okay. So just to recap, 10 days to secure the property, correct?
To fence.
Fence, fence the property. They will be provided 30 days to conduct demolition and otherwise secure the property. And then they will have a total of, we were talking about 45 days to submit plans?
45 days. Not plans, permits.
Yeah, so, the permit involves plans.
I understand plans, I just want to make sure it also includes permits.
To submit all necessary paperwork to obtain a permit.
Correct.
Does everyone on council agree with that?
So, what I would like to know is, back to the ordinance, what, what, what blanks are we filling in with what numbers? And if some might be left blank, right?
You might just want to, we'll, we'll send you one tomorrow, me and Justin.
Oh, so you're going to, okay, one new one? Okay.
Yes.
It'll be a streamlined version. Not quite so many blanks. Okay. So, based on that, I, it sounds like the city attorney and staff have what they need from council, assuming that, that council all is in agreement on that, on those parameters.
At this point, do we have to submit?
We do, we do need to vote on the ordinance. It's just that the city attorney is going to submit the written version to formalize everything. Just want to make sure everyone on council understands what we're, what those parameters were.
So we want to make sure that we give a parameters of 10, 30, and 45?
Yeah. 10, 10, 10 days to secure with fencing, 30 days for interior demolition, and securing the property, 45 days to submit a permit with all necessary paperwork.
And fencing approved by the building official still applies?
Correct. Which the building official has made clear what that fencing will be.
And then we'll happily discuss it in open session on March 18?
To be continued.
And at the beginning of the motion, find it substandard. Got two parts.
Correct. So we have a council member who's prepared to make that motion?
Oh, gosh. I motion to declare the property substandard. And I motioned, do I read B with the blanks?
I would lay out your three.
Okay. I make a motion, within 10 days of the, of the date of this ordinance, 2024-01, the owner shall vacate the property and secure the property fencing approved by the official, and the building shall remain vacated and secured until a certificate of occupancy is issued by the official. And the C?
30 days.
Don't worry about the Cs, just worry about the...
That's 45, right?
30.
The structures on the property shall be abated or demolished by the owner or designee within 30 days of the date of this ordinance, 2024-01. within 30 days of the date of this ordinance, 2024 dash 01. I think it's F2. The owner shall provide official complete construction and demolition plan with permits for the property within 45 days of the date of this ordinance, 2024 dash 01. I'll second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing...
Just wanted to make sure it was, she was good with it, that was right, okay. I got myself confused in that.
Gotcha, okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. Okay, uh, thank you, everyone, I appreciate your patience on that. That now brings us to, item E, citizens' comments. Citizens who have signed a card and are still here, and wish to, wish to speak to the city council will be heard at this time, in compliance with the Texas Civil Meetings Act, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject, and may only respond with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the city council. First card I have is from Jim Fields.
Hello, my name is Jim Fields, I live at 16413 St. Hillier. Again, thank you for allowing me to contribute to tonight's meeting. The first one was a terse too, I still don't understand why it's a closed meeting. There's already been $500,000 blown trying to find developers, which, in itself, is concerned this property's not worth as much time and money as we're putting into it. But if you are proceeding, we would like to know, is it gonna be a baseball field? Are there gonna be more apartments? Or are we moving City Hall? That's what we'd like to know. And, again, you know, I went to the last one, and there were some people there, and I'm just curious if those were developers. One thing I, this is a side note on that meeting, was there was food, beverages for everyone, but the citizens, nothing. I think in the future, I'm not asking you to have any food, because you don't know how people's gonna show up, but at least offer them some water. Moving on, water and sewer, I would just have a question here, do the commercial meters, are they read electronically as well? They, they are?
Yes.
Because the one I found in front of, uh, the Ford dealership was not. It was just a regular meter without the little disc on top to transmit the information. And what's really odd, this is the one I reported, but I want to say it was a good thing, when I did report the, the leak there, it was fixed, whatever it was. And we're saying that, that Joe Myers knew about it, I walk around there just for exercise, I asked someone, I said, hey, do you know anything about your leak? They, nobody had a clue, but, that's another thing. Okay, codes, this has been a sore issue here, and here we're worried about a building, but not one of you, this is what's sad, not one of you are interested in enforcing the codes. I've got the emails, shame on all of you. This, the last quote I got from you, Mayor, you're saying, "We can't do anything unless we have the precise location." And if anybody wants the emails on that conversation, just let me know, my phone number's in the phone book. I can't believe that, if you don't care about the city, you're worried about a building over here, but you don't care about internal city, step down, let somebody else run that does want to make the city a better place to live. Last thing's about the pool, I find it unbelievable, after attending several city council meetings, the pool's broken, it's leaking water, it's sinking, none of those were true, and not one estimate was done on any repairs. I get a different story from, from Councilman Wasson, I get a different story from Austin Police. Mayor, would you please get them together, and let's get some straight dope on this, rather than, I just can't believe it, push an $11 million bond and not having one sheet of paper to justify replacing the pool. That's outrageous. One last thing, I'll bring this up again, it's probably about the fourth or fifth year, I've lost count, I have submitted the Red Cross Pool Management Guide, it is totally ignored. You have lifeguards in different uniforms, the last time, this is another thing I saw, which is bad, we had a guard there, that again, there was a safety issue, brought to their attention, their comment was, what do you want me to do about it? Pushes this slide back about 10 feet, I don't understand why. And then later on, the, later, a couple months later, this guy gets a valor for safety, for saving somebody? I see a pattern here, we had a problem with a code enforcement guy, and he wasn't doing his job, there was a car right across the street with a flat tire, and what'd we do? City manager made him employee of the month the next month. I don't understand that. These people need help or training, or, or discipline. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to make one comment, I did pull up the email you sent to all of us about codes, and I, I responded back to you, and the efforts I had made towards codes, including following the court cases, and you, you replied to me, thank you, and have a good evening, so, um, I was just a little confused by your comment about the code issues. I'm happy to forward you that again, but I definitely, and I know there's people on council that do care about the codes, and we do, we do what we can.
And Jim, I, since you brought me up, I, I will, I will let people know what I wrote. If, you know, usually I try to keep that just between us, but if you're gonna cite it, um, I said that I'm not interested in playing games when it comes to code enforcement. You, on the other hand, have continuously made claims of junk vehicles and other issues in emails and in comments during city council meetings, while refusing repeatedly to provide specific information about the location of these issues. I am tired of this juvenile approach to an issue which seriously affects the value of our homes, I'm happy to look into actual code enforcement issues, but I have no appetite to play games where one person claims to know where such issues exist, but refuses to provide any reliable information on the location of said issues. And Jim?
These are abandoned vehicles that you pass by every day, and as a terrible excuse...
Do I? Do you know where I drive, Jim? And if you're not willing to tell us where they are, Jim, then I'm gonna call it as it is, it's a game, and I'm not gonna play the game. If you're serious about code issues, you tell us where you see these vehicles, and we'll check on them. If you're not interested in doing that, I'm sorry, I can't help you, okay? If I see it, I'll, if I see it, I'll let city staff know, but I don't see them like you do, apparently, so, all right? Anyway, for those who are actually serious about getting business done, let's move on. All right, the next, the next comment card I have is from Kimberly Anau.
My name is Kimberly Anau, and I live at 15601 Singapore Lane. As my 28th installment, Jersey Village had a thought-provoking 1997 like the rest of America. On April Fool's Day, Willa Fortune host Pat Sajak and Jeopardy host Alex Trebek swapped shows for the day. Maybe Chief Bits and Chief Riggs can swap their departmental duties. Chief Riggs, you can ride through Jersey Village in a fire truck before you retire. Mayor Schneider began the year quite busy with meetings regarding the West Gulf Bank road expansion, the traffic light for Jones at Village Green, the Senate Avenue Bridge repair, and talking with Jersey Village High School students. City manager Dell Brown updated council on the remodeling of City Hall, and of the, of a Jack-in-the-Box replating request to share access with Meineke Muffler. A February special work session defined the city's goals and mission statement, and discussed a short-range plan of five to 10 years for community facilities, the water and sewer system, streets and drainage, community enhancement, annexation, economic development, and city services. A councilman requested a traffic flow study for a right-turn-only lane with the westbound 290 theater onto northbound Senate. A request for proposals to design a fire station was approved, and city officials spent a work session visiting three nearby fire station facilities. Also approved was a vote to withdraw from the Metro Bus Authority. A joint public hearing of the Planning and Zoning Commission proposed to amend wording sections such as for various parking areas, lot drainage, visual screening...
I can hear the chatter from here, so please keep it down, particularly while other people are speaking, certainly they stayed quiet while you were speaking, so please extend them the same courtesy, and please do let us enforce the rules instead of loudly hushing. I, I understand, I totally understand, but, thank you, I appreciate it. Kimberly, please continue.
A joint public hearing of the Planning and Zoning Commission proposed to amend wording sections such as for various parking areas, lot drainage, visual screening of trash containers, and plating and zoning standards for townhouse development. A citizen requested an ordinance to restrict on-street parking for day and night hours. The fire department donated two oak trees to landscape the new police department building. The annexed area of land south of the high school was rezoned to permit warehousing and distribution, which also led for West Gulf Bank to expand over the Bayou Tributary towards Solomon, which would then extend down from Seattle with Harris County funding. A petition was submitted requesting Congo and Australia to be a four-way stop sign intersection, though council considered expanding school zones, reducing speed limits, and correcting visual obstructions to make this area safer. The school zone passed unanimously as ordinance 97-14. The selected Warner Cable hometown hero for Jersey Village was Debbie Murray. Council authorization was given for the city to purchase the green space land at 15211 Philippine. A joint public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission convened with a large number of citizens commenting on the BSL Golf Corporation request for the Jersey Meadow Golf Center to have a new zoning as single-family residential, eventually known as Lakes of Jersey Village, along with other areas rezoned and specific use permits approved for telephone-switching facilities. Approval was given to solicit bids to purchase three police vehicles. Council also approved the annual Harris County agreements to house city prisoners and for emergency management services. A mutual aid agreement with the Ponderosa Volunteer Fire Department was approved. Also in 1997, Mr. Fred Rogers, when receiving his lifetime achievement award at the Daytime Emmys, asked the audience to take 10 seconds to think of the people who have helped you become who you are. I now ask, who in Jersey Village is your inspiration to be a better neighbor because you want to be their neighbor? Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly, appreciate it. Okay, uh...
May I respond quickly with a statement of fact?
Absolutely, please do.
Uh, the, the speaker spoke about Meineke and Jack-in-the-Box, if, if we remember their location fondly, I believe those are in the same strip as where our, our guest is representing at the speedy stop, so just kinda tying the whole meeting together there, so...
Good point, good point. All right, uh, that was the last of our comment cards, and so now we move on to the city manager's report. Austin Police.
Mayor, councilors, the reports in front of you, happy to answer any questions you might have. Have two things I do want to point out, or bring to the attention of the council and the public. Last week, we did receive notification from FEMA that we received another $1.52 million in grant funding. Thank you, that, that grant funding is for the Birm Wall Street project. When you combine that with the CDBG grant that we received, and the, between those two grants, the remaining portion is about $120,000, and we believe the state's gonna pick up that tab, so it does look like that whole project will be done without any local funds at all, so, very excited about that. Another thing that I do want to point out is that this is Chief Riggs's last council meeting with us tonight, and I want to thank Chief Riggs for his time the last few years here. He's done a great job, and we'll, we'll miss him, but he'll, he'll go off and have fun elsewhere, I guess. Thank you, chief, I do appreciate it.
Any questions for the city manager regarding his report? I did just want to say, I, I used to make a habit of doing this, but I, particularly, I, I had to highlight it here. The golf course had, I think, may have been their best month ever in December? If not, it's pretty dang close. Uh, it, it, in December, had their best month ever. With construction going on, had their best month ever, and most of that were green fees. They also, it, it, per round even, $62.70 per round, which is huge compared to what they usually do.
And that includes Christmas Day, or Christmas Eve special and being closed on Christmas Day, I'm presuming?
Uh, yeah, I mean, so, kudos to the golf course, that's a huge, huge number.
Uh, oh, were you gonna say, um, just real quick, while we speak of the golf course, can you give any updates on, high-level updates on timelines of the new clubhouse?
Coming soon. No, we, we do expect, um, we have meetings every week, we do expect that we'll have some pretty big announcements as to dates and everything within the next few weeks, and we're planning the grand open house sometime late summer, maybe a little bit earlier, I don't want to, you know how construction can go, but, right now, the, the new clubhouse building will be open first, and we'll have that kinda soft opening as soon as we can, we'll let everybody know, and then everything will be ready, um, late summer, and I don't think we want to give out any other timelines or just construction ways that they can go.
Okay, unless there are any other questions, we'll move on. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for consideration during the regular agenda?
I, I let people off easy the past couple months, so, um, I'd like to remove items G3 and G6, if we can, please?
Okay, items G3 and G6 will be considered at the top of the regular agenda. Any other council members wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion at this time on the modified consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, motion to approve the consent agenda as modified, the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously, so we will then consider what was item G3. Consider ordinance number 2024-03, amending the capital replacement fund budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024, and the, and the amount not to exceed $200,000 by increasing revenue line item 07726574, fire department vehicle and equipment for the purchase of tools and equipment for the new fire and tower truck. Mark Bits, Fire Chief.
Mayor and council, fire department is requesting a budget amendment to line item 07726574, fire department vehicle and equipment replacement line item. This request is a housekeeping measure to move the monies from a revenue line item to an expense line item. This past budget session, $200,000 was moved out of the fire control district budget for the purchase of tools and equipment for the new fire and tower truck on order. This funding was to begin purchasing tools and equipment to beat obvious increases in cost of equipment and to get ahead of already long lead times of equipment we need to order. The money was moved into a revenue account, and not actually moved into a working expense line item account for this fiscal year. So since we have already begun ordering equipment, we need the funding to be in an expense account, that is 07726574, so we can pay for these ordered items. We cannot pay for the equipment from a revenue account. The motion's before you.
Discussion amongst council. Discussion amongst council.
I just, the only reason I brought it off is because it wasn't, I mean, I think we tacitly approved it during the budget meetings, but it wasn't an explicit expense line item. I have no issues with it. I mean, I think that outfitting this truck is very necessary, and it'll be a welcome addition. I just wanted to make sure that we were able to discuss it if anyone had any questions on the spend.
No, I think it clearly needs to be done. I was just curious, I'm assuming the equipment takes, you know, I remember, if I recall, the lead time on the truck was like 18 months? It was a long, I remember.
Thirty-six months.
Okay, so, it was hopeful, okay. All right, so thirty-six months, does the, is the equipment also on that thirty-six-month timeframe, or is it varied depending on what it is?
It varies depending on equipment. We've received some already, but some's 12 months to 16 months out, and just, we just want to make sure that we get everything in time.
Oh, I have no doubt that it's a nightmare to try to coordinate all that. So, thank you.
Any other discussion amongst council on this?
I move to approve ordinance 24, 2024-03.
A second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. So now we will bring up what was item G6. Consider resolution 2024-03 authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements for the FMA Program Home Elevation Grant Administration and Project Management Services for Grant 1 and 2 with Jeffrey S. Ward and Associates. Austin Bleese, city manager.
Mayor and councilors, the two grant applications for home elevations that were submitted as part of the FY22 FEMA flood mitigation assistance were identified for further review by FEMA. We anticipate that they'll be wrapping up that review over the next couple of months, and we should receive both of those contracts this spring. As part of that, funds were included in the grant to pay for a third-party grant administrator. We're anticipating final award notification in the coming months, and I've gone out to RFQ to have that grant administrator on hand when that contract is executed. We posted a bid, or we posted the RFQ on the website in Midnight Direct on December 6th. It was posted in the Chronicle on the 6th and 13th. We had several companies that downloaded the RFQ. We had only one proposal, or one firm submitted a proposal back. They've clearly demonstrated their expertise and ability to manage all the aspects of the grants. We will not enter into contracts with them until the contracts with the state for the grant funding is actually done. So it's two contracts for two different grants. Each of them would be $252,000. Of that, the cost to the city will be just over $12,000 for the one and just over $10,000 for the other. The cost split is based upon the number of homes in the grant that are insured, repetitive loss, or severe repetitive loss. For insured homes, that split is 75-25. For repetitive loss, the split is 90-10. And for severe repetitive loss, FEMA covers that at 100%. We listed all the things in here that the grant administrator would do. Happy to go through those if council wants, but based upon the grant funding for this portion of the project and the extensive work this outside company will do, it seems like available use of the funds, and this company is certainly very well qualified.
Discussion amongst council on this item.
Just wanted to validate, you know, or verify. So we'll pay out the 504 only if these grants are finally approved, and of that, we'll be reimbursed for all but, I think, $30,000 or less than that.
Twenty-two, twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-two thousand. Small price to pay for flood mitigation.
And more importantly, small price to pay to ensure that all the paperwork's done correctly and everything gets filed as needed according to the federal rules. Any other questions or discussion amongst council on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024-03.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to the top of our regular agenda. Item H1, discuss and take appropriate action regarding water and sewer rates. Austin Bleese, city manager.
Mayor and councilors, back in December during the workshop, the council requested staff to explore having a maximum usage for the sewer rates. If the council wanted to do a maximum usage of 12,000 gallons for sewer rates, that would be approximately $600,000 impact to the utility fund. If it was a 10,000 gallon maximum, that would be approximately $730,000 impact to the utility fund. The main driver of this is the lawn irrigation. In 2024, we had the drought conditions for a long time. In years where there's average rainfall, there's less irrigation that occurs. And as we noted in the rate study, there's some cities that do have a maximum. Conner has a maximum of 10,000, Lake Jackson has a maximum of 15, and Memorial Villages have a 30,000 gallon maximum. Making this change, as noted, would be, to 12,000 would be $600,000 impact without increasing water rates. It's projected to keep the utility fund below the three-month operating reserve through fiscal year 2027 and possibly meeting the three-month operating reserve in fiscal '28. We're planning to look at the rate study in March or April for a possible presentation to council at one of the budget meetings, probably the May budget meetings, for future planning purposes to ensure the rates are meeting the current projected needs for the city. I'm not sure if council wants to request any action from this to come forward at the next meeting, but that's the information that the council has requested.
Do you have a volume of houses on, with irrigation meters, or those, maybe a percentage, rough percentage of those without? Whatever's easiest to answer.
I believe it's about 30% that have them. I don't have that number right off the top of my head.
I don't think it would double, but if there was a significant amount of houses that opted into an irrigation meter over the next year or so, would that significantly impact the sewer rate collection, and how would that affect the utility budget?
In order to make a major dent, you'd have to see a lot of people changing, and also the water rate structure is a little bit different for irrigation side, so the increase or the decrease wouldn't be quite as much. You know, based upon the interest that we've had, 15-ish or so people, that wouldn't be a huge impact. If it got to be, you know, 1,000, or, you know, if 100, 200, that would make a little bit more, but we haven't seen that type of interest just yet.
I just want to clarify, because this is, to make sure that I'm understanding the way it's been explained to me, that if, if we were to do anything at all with the sewer rates, to lower those, to change those, to cap those, to do something different, regardless of that, we would, if something like that was done, we would have to raise water rates to compensate for the loss of revenue, correct?
Correct. We might not have to do that today, but at some point down the line, we would, we would need to do that.
So, that to me just sounds like there's, as yet, I mean, the thing is, is I completely understand a lot of frustration that has come with the raising of the water rates and the raising of the sewer rates. I just think it's, I've yet to see an answer. You know what I mean? A solution that makes everybody happy? I don't know if I'm, what we're missing.
I get that, and I also get that the bulk of water being used out of the main meter is towards lawn irrigation, which I don't believe should be charged towards sewer. I do believe, though, that you should be charged for what you use. So using, applying an average over the winter months into the summer months may not be fair to those that travel, to those that aren't using their sewer. I mean, it's, but I think that at a certain point, common sense says there's a threshold and not everybody's doing 40 loads of laundry a day and taking 12 showers, right? Or whatever would use that much irrigation. So I think a cap is fair. I see what limits put on the city. I did not do the math ahead or even show my work, so I don't know, like, what the 80% threshold is of usage before it gets into water rates, and I think the staff can do that work, and I'm happy to do some of that on the side as well. I think we have a lot of the information at hand from prior years. We just have to find a way to make, to make something, I would think we'd have to do, find a way to make some of this work. But you're right, there is no clear-cut solution that's fair to everyone, right? It's just what's, what's best for the greater good, and making these decisions trade off certain values and certain, we're not all going to get a medal.
Obviously, the discussion on the rates and how, kind of how we get there is obviously something that is still going to be a continuing discussion, but as I've told several people who've asked me about this, I do think that where, wherever our higher costs are coming from, that is where the revenue should be coming from. In other words, people who, whose use of the system increases our costs should be the ones who bear that extra cost. My concern is, as council member Wasson pointed out, is that people who have one water meter, who are watering their lawns over the summer and getting charged significantly more are not, they're getting charged for a ton of sewer usage when none of that water sees the sewer. You know, and yet, some, you know, if our water costs are going up, it doesn't, the city of Houston doesn't care whether that water goes through an irrigation meter or through a house meter. They're going to charge it the same either way. In my mind, if water costs have gone up, water fees should go up. Using the sewer charges to offset that doesn't make any sense to me.
I thought sewer rates went to wastewater treatment plants, lift stations, all of that. I thought those were actually separate, is...
So our utility fund is one fund. Water rates and sewer rates go into the utility fund. All the expenses are paid for that. Over the next five years, though, the bulk of our capital improvement costs are wastewater-related and not water-related.
But either way, the issue is that we are, we're talking about the increased costs, and we're talking about, particularly talking about the increased costs of water, and this is one of the reasons why I've made a point of trying to delineate between what are the water costs, what are the sewer costs. The other issue also is, at least based on everything that I've heard, within, let's say your maximum, you have a maximum amount you can put through your sewer system. As long as you stay under that, it's not the same as water, where if you only use 70% of the water that you used compared to the prior month, you tend to see costs drop significantly. With sewer, if you are at 90% of your maximum, and then the next month you're at 70% of your maximum, your operating costs are not, at least based on what I understand, not significantly changing. So again, in my mind, sewer ought to be pretty flat. Water is where there ought to be a significant differentiation in how much you use is how much you pay.
One thing staff probably will look at, and I think they go on, piggyback on that, if they're not, I'd ask them to, is maybe raise the rates after, above the level of the cap. So if we cap it at 15, 12, or 15,000 gallons, usage above that now goes to a higher rate, and we could possibly pick up revenue that way.
Are you talking about on the water or the sewer?
No, I'm saying on the, on the water. Like, if we cap sewer usage at X amount, water usage above X amount goes at a certain, certain higher rate. Just one thought, I mean, I'm sure there's different ways to look at it.
Is that not part of that thing about the tiered, required tiered system?
Yeah, no, it already is, costs more. I'm just saying, raise that cost.
But I think this is where we're going to have to look at, where we start looking at the rate study and really looking at the breakdown. Trust me, the sewer cap, I think, is better than nothing. I don't know if it's quite the solution. And, yeah, we do have to make the system solvent one way or another, you know, but yeah, it's just a matter of how do we divvy it up? It's not an easy problem to solve, but...
This is my least favorite topic. If we're ranking topics.
I agree.
I feel like I've talked about water more in the last two months than I have in my entire life.
Yeah.
I told you I didn't feel like adulting today, so.
So, we definitely, especially with warmer months coming up, it's something we need to tackle sooner rather than later, so whatever we need to do to, to, if we have to have another work session, we can do that, but...
I also know that the change in rates was a big shell shock in, you know, the pass-through we had from Houston, but I do think we need to let the dust settle just a little bit to see if problems continue with the weird bills, and I don't know. I don't want to change, keep changing things too often and not really get a true sense of if something's working or not.
At this point, I'm less worried about the weird bills, and I'm more worried about the very un-weird bills under the system we've implemented that will come and people will pay substantially more if they don't have an irrigation meter. I really want to get ahead of that because then it's, it's just going to get worse. The sooner we can solve this problem, the sooner we can head off that massive bill that 70%, or assuming they all water their lawns, some of us don't as much as we should, that are going to come in about April, if not sooner.
And, oh, gosh, my microphone, I'm sorry. Mayor, this is very premature, but I am, when I went to the Houston-Galveston area council meeting recently, I was informed of some different grants that I could possibly apply for our city. I talked to Austin about this, maybe asking if we could do some type of grant to get some second meters put in at a reduced, as a citizen, but it's just in the very, very, very beginning stages of me reaching out to people. No promises, but I'm trying.
I'm all for that. I just, I don't know who the grant's from, but, okay. I just know that the snail's pace at which grant money comes means that maybe about this time next year, if we did apply for it and get it, maybe now we'd be talking about how to implement it. Maybe it's faster than that because it's not the federal government, but that would be my only concern, is that we would be talking about money that would be coming well after the problem had been pretty, pretty bad.
So do you think this is something we need to, if y'all are wanting to get, like, something to change, then I think we're going to have to talk about either, because I, like, I see information, I don't see a plan, like a suggested plan. You know, like, I don't think we, any of us have come to any kind of plan, so I think we either need to be talking...
And that's why, I think in the memo, Austin mentioned that in a future meeting we would have, we would look more closely at the rate structure.
Yep. He was talking about it being ready for budget in May, which would not be, which, if I recall, we call it, we discussed last May, but we didn't, it didn't get voted till August, right?
Yeah.
Into its fiscal year, so I'm just saying, if your concern is about hotter months, then...
I think we, yeah, we definitely not by May. I think we, I would like to see something put into place by the time people get bills and, for their utility bills in April, if at all possible, even if it means we have to put some sort of a temporary fix in place in terms of numbers.
Knowing that then it may change again after budget.
Yeah.
Okay. Just trying to clarify.
Anything we can do to get further away from the current system? Obviously, we would have to adjust numbers because we got to make sure we stay solvent, but I mean, I think we got to move fast because otherwise, there are going to be a group of people who are going to get hit real hard with some very high bills unnecessarily.
Yeah, and I think there are also ways that, in addition to whatever action we take, we can also proactively encourage people to not overwater, to not overuse, to ways that, you know, recommended best practices ways to watch their consumption and do other things. You know, I'm sure staff can, can look at those as well, and I'm happy to discuss those at a later time. Anyway, just, there's a lot of things we can do directly and indirectly.
Any other?
So, we can, we can have something to bring back in February for council, if you'd like. I just kind of need to know what gallon threshold do you want to cap the sewer at? At this point, I don't know that I would recommend making any major changes to the water rates. I think it was mentioned that, you know, making all of those changes, that let's get a baseline and see where we're at. We have seen a couple, the lift station project came in lower, so that's going to help us out for the fiscal year. The bond things could help us out a little bit from interest rate standpoint and those types of things. So I think, I think we can be okay for a little while if we just do the rate cap, and it's not a great long-term solution, and I don't want anybody to get that impression, but I don't know that we want to keep tweaking the water rates.
Do we know what percentage of single-meter homes exceed, I guess, let's just look at 12? Do we know roughly what?
I don't write offhand.
I'm just wondering.
It varies month to month. That's, that's the other piece of it. In the rate study, we looked at about 10 different homes and what the impact would be to their, their average bill, and on the high-usage month, it was a high amount, but average, it was about 15 or so dollars per month.
I mean, I guess I should have looked at the data that I had before... I mean, I guess I should have looked at the data that I had beforehand, I would have had that number. My only concern is this, that, I, I understand the issue where even at 12,000, it's a huge hit on an annual basis to the budget, but at the same time, if we're talking about that it only helps, you know, it only kind of cuts out the edge cases of like 5% of people, I mean, yeah, that's better than nothing, but it's, it's also, there may be a lot of people who, maybe they only do 6,000 gallons in the winter and then they do actually, when they water their lawn, hit 10, 11, 12. And that's going to be, trying to do math with my head, it's dangerous, but I mean, you're talking about somebody whose utility bill is going to be probably four times what it was in the winter? I mean, it's just a huge jump compared to the old system.
Yeah, and there's, there's a lot that plays into that too. I mean, rainfall amounts and everything, if we have another drought, that's going to impact that people are going to water more. If we have a rainy season, that, you know, people are going to water less. There's, there's so many variables and trying to predict what the end result is going to be on any given year, it's, it's tough.
How long would it take us if we wanted to re-implement, just hypothetically, wanted to re-implement this winter sewer averaging and then calc, just saying hypothetically, if we did, and then wanted to calculate water rates to make up that shortfall, how long would it take us to actually make that, that determination? I'm just saying if...
So you're suggesting everybody pay for other people's over-usage in the summer?
What I'm saying is, under our current system, 70% of people who choose to water their lawn are going to be subsidizing the 30% who have irrigation meters for a big chunk of their water costs. That is what we have in the status quo right now. I'm trying to avoid it.
So if I remember right, the old ordinance had the averaging of, November, January, and February?
I think it was four months. I think it was November, December, January, February.
Okay. Obviously, we'll, we'll have that data at the end of, end of February. We could do everything in March, have something in April. Yeah, we could have something in April.
But just to clarify, are you, you asking for that information as an idea of making that retroactive for averaging purposes?
It wouldn't be retro, I mean, certainly the averaging would be used for the current, the months we're in currently, but my, my point being that if, if the goal is to try to charge people sewer rates that most closely approximate what is likely their actual use of the sewer, the old system is the best we can get to, to that measure. The current system is not adequate to, to achieve that goal.
But what would you say to the person, so if you're, so you've told, we've already told people we're not averaging, so perhaps in January of this year, someone has had decided to repair their pool and they spent however many thousands of gallons that is to repair their pool and that now becomes part of their new retroactive averaging?
Let's look at the data and see if there is such a case.
That to me is not...
If there is, we can deal with it.
That's going back on somebody, on something that they had no inclination of you doing.
My point is, we can, let's look to see if that exists. I would rather deal...
I guarantee you that exists, he's sitting right there.
I would rather, you know what, Fred, I would rather deal with the edge case because, again, if we have the ability to pass an ordinance, we can deal with those cases. However, I would rather deal with that one case in some fashion than just continue to barrel down a road where we know 70% of houses, of those houses, if they water their lawns, they're going to pay a huge amount of money. We can deal with those, those, those couple of cases. There's ways we can pass an ordinance that deals with it. What we know right now is that there are going to be a ton of people who are going to be slammed with a massive bill, not because they're using that much sewer, but because we decided that was where we were going to allocate the costs. And I don't think that's fair at all because again, the, if, if we have costs and part of those costs also are water, and if it's, if there's a consumable, which is water, that's costing a lot more, then we need to be focusing not so much on jacking up the sewer revenues, we need to be focusing on the water. That, that's, that's, that's all I'm saying, is that we need to have, the, the, the rates and the revenues need to bear some semblance to where those costs come from, and they don't right now.
I don't, with, with all due respect, Mayor, I don't think, I don't think we can break those costs out to be great. We don't have, our, our, we have one fund for both. We don't break it out, water and sewer. I've worked in cities where it's been a sewer fund, where all the expenses are there and it's been a water fund and all the expenses are there. To actually get into all that with the way we do it, it, that's going to be difficult.
And I understand, it's not going to be perfect, but I think that, I feel like the system right now as it exists is far cry from it. Like, we, we can, we can, we can, we don't have to let perfect be the enemy of the good. We're not going to get to an exact perfect system, but I think we can get a lot closer and I think what we have right now is not a very good one. I, and I've been talking a lot, so I don't know if other council members, we, we've been talking a lot, I don't know if other council members feel that same way or not.
We've talked about this for so long, I've even forgotten why we went away from averaging. Was it because the averaging wasn't pulling in enough revenue to cover our costs, is that what the, the reason was?
Correct, yeah.
If we go back to averaging and raise the rate, does that simplify things? Does it get us to this, the, to the same end?
We, we can get there, for sure. It's, it's going to take some, some looking at all of, I mean, doing the rate study again are over, and it's going to take a little bit of time to do that. And the water rates are going to go up fairly, fairly high. When it comes to water rates, we have to have it on a tiered system, the state requires that. There's no requirement for that on a, on a sewer system. I think that's probably why a lot of muds just have a flat fee. You know, 20 bucks a month is what some, some muds have. Yeah. So I mean, it, it's all, it's all just a matter of, you know, how it's allocated on the bill. I mean, the, the dollar amounts that we need are the dollar amounts that we need. If we call it water, if we call it sewer, you know, that's just the label on the bill, but at the end of the day, it's, it's the money that it's going to take to pay, pay the costs.
Yeah, and just for anyone out there listening, I mean, yeah, it's, no one's going to come away saying, "I'm paying the same amount I was before." No one is. I, I, I hope no one's under that illusion. I just, I feel like the system needs to have some, some relational, like, it needs to connect in some way to our actual costs. Even if, in the sewer rates may even need to also go up as well. I mean, I, it's just, the difference is, it's also, when you calculate things, that's where it gets tricky with the sewer rates.
I think it would be, also as part of this conversation, not specific to just this, I know we've been talking about people wanting the, the information on their bill so that they can read it regarding the rates and their account numbers and all those things, and that Tyler Technologies is claiming that that's going to be very difficult for them. And I just want to make sure, unless there's an update on that since our last conversation, I want to make sure Tyler Technologies is fully aware that that's not, that that's not necessarily like a request that needs to be done. That is the expectation and if they can't do it, I think we can talk about finding somebody that can, because everybody needs that information on their bills every time.
I mean, we're...
Tyler knows that that's what we want and they're working towards making that happen. Finding a new vendor, whoo.
No, I, it, push comes to shove, put together an Excel spreadsheet, you plug in the numbers and boom, you've got your explanation. I mean, this is not rocket science. We can, we can find a, a simpler solution.
I just want to make sure they understand that this is, this one's not, I mean, that's, I, I think it's a very simple request and I understand maybe in a coding situation it's not, but we pay them a lot of money. And I feel like that we should have the expectation of getting the level of customer service we want and I think that everybody that lives here deserves to have that information on their bill, their rates, all of it.
I'd agree and I, I know I've worked on enough bill pay projects that there's software where you can give the data and spit it out however you want with unicorns and clouds if you want to on there. Not that we want that.
I do.
Yeah. Aside, just to kind of, it is, with the time check, and we've spoken a lot on this issue and we have several more water and wastewater topics to go, what do you need, Austin? Do you have everything you need for us to move forward? Or?
I, I, I think council wants to have an ordinance in February with a cap, but I'm not sure and I don't know what that number would be.
Can, I've written down, knowing the costs or the eclipse of revenue and, and what that may mean, I've written down 10, 12, and 15. And, and with the idea that I will go back and do homework and council may be able to and just see what the best option is, but I'm not sure what other councillors feel.
Oh, I think it's fine if, if you do that. Nobody wants me to do the math. That wouldn't be helpful to anyone.
So, Austin, on the caps, you had the impact numbers, what were those again? Have you capped it at 10?
600,000 at 10, or 12, sorry, I flipped away. At 12,000 gallons, it's 600,000, at 10,000 gallon, it's 730,000.
Meaning that we're eating into what, the revenue that we need to cover our expenses.
So then we would have to take that number and consider that, or I guess, as part of having to regain that into water bill, water rates?
Correct. And I, like I said before, I think we could be okay for this fiscal year, but moving forward, we would need to definitely make an adjustment.
I, I would suggest the 10 with a goal of revisiting the rate structures, hoping that we can then, I, I would hope that we can revisit the rate structure in a way where this cap would be a, just a failsafe while we worked out the details. In case we do get into the warmer months and we haven't yet found a solution, that's at least a, a backstop against people getting hit hard with bills. And then once we do find a solution that's, that is closer to our goal, then we go ahead and remove that cap with the understanding that, that, that we've solved the issue, that that was intended to sort of hold off for the moment.
Yeah, I, family of four, we use probably seven maximum dirt of, of water, 7K, but that's my house and it may be different from everyone else's, so I don't know what, the, the question, that's what I wanted to look at, what's the right number? Because obviously, 10 sounds right and sounds good, but it might be, 12 might be a better cap that, depending on what people use, so. So I kind of wanted to explore what for staff would, has better access to the numbers to see what is more common or better or whatnot.
James, your thoughts?
Sir, I, yeah, I cut up in your finishing the water discussion, did you ask?
Sorry, I didn't, I couldn't quite catch what you said there.
Fully charged battery, fully charged. Y'all were cutting out there and you were finishing the water discussion. Did you ask me a question or?
Yeah, I was just trying to see what your thoughts were on the matter, since you'd been pretty quiet.
I think we've talked about this a lot. I don't think I have anything to add to this.
Drew thinks 12 or 10, not sure. I think 10.
I thought we were going to get math on both and then, like, with an email or something?
Oh, we're holding off on that.
Yeah, I didn't think we were doing it now, I thought it was going to come up in February.
We've proven tonight, we're pretty good at filling the blanks when it comes to writing ordinances, so perhaps...
Hopefully, nobody's watering their yard at the moment.
Oh yeah, definitely not. Okay, so, so we'll, we'll find out more, I guess by February regarding how many houses hit which numbers and then we'll, okay. Sorry, I misunderstood, I thought we were coming up with a number for this ordinance today. Okay. So in, at least as far as that baby steps, that one, you count what you need.
That gives me more of what I need, thank you.
Okay. Okay, unless any other members of council have anything else, I think we can move on. Got it. Okay, we're moving on to item H2. Consider ordinance number 2024-04, amending the Jersey Village Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Building and Development, Article 8, Public Utilities, Section 14-208, general criteria by adding a new Section G titled Irrigation Meter Installation, providing a penalty, providing for severability, providing for publication, and providing an effective date. Robert Bassford, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Public Works Department has received numerous requests for alterations to the current irrigation meter installation process, particularly from property owners whose water mains are located on the opposite side of the street. In response, the city has considered input from the public and aims to enhance services for both current and future utility customers. The proposed policy change is aimed at streamlining the process for homeowners who wish to tap into an existing service line when the water main is situated on the opposite side of the street. At present, a separate tap is required, often involving a costly and complex task of boring underneath the street. To initiate this change, residents can now submit a request for service line taps through the permit process. Upon receiving the request, the Utility Division will thoroughly evaluate the homeowner's current service, taking into account factors such as the existing line's capacity to accommodate the additional connection. This assessment ensures that any modification will not have adverse effects on neighboring properties or the overall integrity of the city's water supply system. If the Utility Division determines that the existing service line can support the additional connection without causing harm, the homeowner, the homeowner will be granted formal permission to proceed with a tap. This approach not only simplifies the process for residents, but also contributes to the city's commitment to efficient and utility customer-friendly policies and water management. Jersey Village strives to strike a balance between meeting the needs of property owners and ensuring the sustainability and reliability of its water supply infrastructure. The recommended, recommended motion is to approve ordinance 2024-04.
Okay, thank you. Discussion amongst council on this item.
No, I think this is a good way to make it more affordable and more realistic for people to get those second meters and also without sacrificing to any kind of infrastructure of the city.
Kudos on the, on the design of the ordinance.
Yeah. I'll make, I'll, was there any motion? I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-04.
A second.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. That brings us to ordinance number H3, consider, I'm sorry, item number H3. Consider ordinance number 2024-05, amending the impact fee fund budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023 and ending September 30th, 2024, and the amount not to exceed $298,000 by increasing line item 04455515. Impact Fee Consultant, approving the proposal from Quiddity Engineering LLC to conduct a water and wastewater master plan and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents with Quiddity Engineering LLC concerning these consulting services. Austin Blee, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, on the recommendation, one of the recommendations of the impact fee study that was adopted by council in December was a water and wastewater master plan study. Staff is recommending that we move forward at that study, those studies now to stay ahead of the curve to, for any potential development. So the development of the comprehensive water wastewater master plan is essential for ensuring a sustainable and reliable water supply for current and future generations. As our study has a potential for growth, the demand for clean, potable water increases. Master plan addresses these challenges by addressing, by assessing current water resources and identifying the necessary improvements in the infrastructure and technology. Being proactive like this helps us to be, make sure we have high-quality water for everybody in the future. Effective wastewater management is another critical component of our plan. Properly treating and disposing the wastewater is vital for protecting our water, bodies of water from pollution and our ecosystems as well. The master plan outlines the strategies for the collection, treatment, and discharge of the wastewater, ensuring that these processes comply with the environmental regulations. So the engineer would assess our three water plants, our two elevated, elevated storage tanks, one of the wastewater treatment plants, the one at Castle Bridge that the city owns, and the one wastewater treatment plant at White Oak Joint Base, the six lift stations and approximately the 257 linear feet of water distribution system and 205 linear feet of the wastewater collection system. As we're just to... of the wastewater collection system. As we're just a stakeholder in the White Oak Bayou Joint Powers Board, and we just own a piece of that, that water plant, that, the scope doesn't have any recommendations for that, but Quiddity does work for that board as well. They'll use our historical records that we have, and we'll be able to get started shortly after, assuming this were to be approved tonight, and their goal is to have this report completed by the end of September this year. So, this study we paid for from the impact fee fund would not impact, or would not hit the general fund at all. We do have plenty of money, assuming the council would approve the ordinance for the budget amendment here, and that's what this, this item is all about.
Okay, questions and discussion from council on this item?
What is the length of scope, right? You've given the scope, they come up with these recommendations. I know the impacts fee study usually covers five with projections of 10 years. Is this kind of things we'd need to do in the next 10 years, or 20, or five, or?
This would look at everything over at least the next five to 10 years, and it would also look at everything in the future land use assumptions and say, okay, if, if the ETJ area gets developed out in the way that the future land use exemption, say, this is what it would, would need to be. Obviously, if, when we get to a development situation for those areas, if that development that's being proposed and accepted is not exactly what's there, we might have to tweak a few things there, but at least we would have the baseline information and everything that we would need. So, this plan would still be very helpful in that, even though the end result at that point in time might have to be modified a little bit.
So, whereas the impact fee study is like at a 30,000 or 40,000 foot level, this digs into the details.
Brings it down to just below the clouds.
Thank you. That was actually my question as well, is how it differs from an impact fee study, so, because the scope's very similar.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2024-05. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. That brings us to item H4. Discuss and take appropriate action on bond issuance and consider resolution number 2024-08, a resolution expressing intent to finance expenditures to be incurred. Austin Bleese, City Manager.
With the residential approval of the bonds at the November election, the next step is for the council to consider the issuance of the bonds. Attached to this memo is Exhibit A is a tentative schedule of the events for the bond issuance. The first step in that process is tonight, when the council reviews the plan and the schedule of events. John Robuck, our financial advisor, he is here in the audience with us. He does advise that if we're going to issue bonds for any projects, that we would need, that we should do that for any projects that we think we'll do within the next two years. As such, the city staff has recommended the council authorize the bonds for the following projects: the Congo Street, Singapore, Australia, Seattle, Solomon, the White Oak Bayou wastewater plant, the sewer pipe replacement, and the Ecuador Bridge. I do want to strongly note that the Ecuador Bridge would be a walking and bicycling bridge only, not a vehicle. I will repeat, not a vehicle bridge for Ecuador. The next steps would be for our financial advisor will be to do the first draft of the preliminary official statement or the POS. The POS is an informational disclosure document released prior to the sale that describes the proposed new issue of bonds prior to the final determination of the maturity amounts, interest rates, and the offering prices and yields. That contains preliminary information on the terms and conditions of the bond sale included in the purpose, security features, and disclosures in economic, financial, and legal information. So, if we hold to the schedule outlined in Exhibit A, we should close on the bonds and take delivery of the money in late April. Our plan for the Congo Street project is to be out to bid in February and potentially award bids in March or April. Work would not commence until the bond sale closes, and we're also working with Sci Fair ISD on that as well, because that's gonna impact the schools and the bus routes. The other street projects will begin the design phase in late April. We'd utilize the engineering firms that were identified in the other agenda item tonight the council approved. We'll bring those proposals back to council before those contracts would get signed for that work. Currently, staff has identified a sewer main issue on Wall Street near Rio Grande. That section of pipe, starting at Rio Grande, running along Wall, up Crawford, into Tahoe, is a section of pipe that is slated to be fixed with the bonds. Given that the issue that's been found, it is imperative that we fix that problem sooner rather than later. With that, staff is recommending the city council approve the attached resolution stating our intention to pay ourselves back with bond revenues for expenses occurred on that fix. If the council were to approve that resolution, staff would immediately begin to get out, go out to bid, sorry, the memo's wrong there, to go out to bids for that fix of the problem. During the summer of 2023, the expected impact to our tax rate, if all the 33.8 million in general fund bonds were to be sold, would have been approximately 10.5 cents, as this is the requested amount, is only about 38% of that amount. We expect the tax rate impact to be approximately 4 cents, but we won't know that until later on for sure. John Robuck is here. He is available to answer any questions the council might have, and with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, discussion amongst council or questions?
I only had one point to make, that since we approved the bond budget, and there was a little bit left over for the bridges and streets, I've just heard a lot of suggestion from citizens about the golf course bridge over there, and while we're already doing construction by the beautiful golf course and giving it a gorgeous facelift, just consideration for that, that bridge becoming able for two cars to safely pass. I think a lot of citizens use that bridge, so I just wanted to throw that out there for some citizen input.
So, the, the big discussion for tonight on that topic would not be so much whether or not we should do that golf course bridge. It would be, should we include that other $2 million into the bond proposal that the council would issue the bonds for? That, the citizens voted authorize the bonds for that full amount. The council can issue the bonds for that full amount for roads, streets, and bridges, and it certainly qualifies. But the bigger topic for tonight would not be so much yes or no on that specific project, just should we do the 2.5 million that had originally been earmarked for Ecuador?
I, I think it comes down to, and this may, probably won't be the case, but what happens if we issue bonds and don't use the money?
Can he come up?
Mr. Robuck, I've got a question for him.
If we issue the, the bonds and don't use the money, it would sit, we would keep it in the interest-bearing account. If we have leftover money, if some of those streets come in lower than what we think they might, and we have that extra $2 million there, we could add on another street to the product, or to the list that we haven't talked about yet, but we could use that money in the future for sure. So, bonding for that money, not necessarily a bad thing. Obviously, we would pay interest on it, but it could allow another project down the road.
I was curious if you could, if you, I was curious if you could explain to me the, I think I understand, but about bonding for two years, and if you could just kind of go into that a little bit for everybody's benefit.
Yes. John Robuck, BeOK Financial Securities, Mayor, council members, thanks for having me out tonight. Reasons it's two years, spend down requirements is about three years for arbitrage purposes, but because of the cost of issuance to sell bonds and the amount of work and costs that go into it, it's economies of scale. You want to try to do projects for the next two to three years. That way, you issue one bond issue, the larger the size, the more interest you get from investors, the lower interest rates.
Okay, that makes total sense. I just wanted to make sure that was the same thing I was thinking.
One other question while, while you're standing there. I think the exhibit, Exhibit A, the finance plan lists a 25-year payoff. Just, what would be the difference between more aggressive at a 20 versus a 30? Would we get a better interest rate? I know the principal, obviously, payment would be higher.
Right. So, so, yes, your, your overall interest cost would be reduced, but your annual payments would be increased significantly by, by shorting it. If you linked it out, you'd be paying more interest, but your annual payments would be less. So, it's a trade-off. Again, talk about, we're talking about the water sewer rates. You know, the 25 years for roads and bridges and water sewer typically, that's an average rate we use or timeframe we use for the life of projects, sort of matching the useful life of those projects, and making sure people pay for what they're using the next 25 years.
So, looking at the timeline for the sale of the bonds.
Yes, sir.
There's been a little talk, you know, Wall Street Journal about Federal Reserve may lower interest rates after their March meeting, but people are kind of looking more towards the May meeting. You're looking at selling bonds, kind of March-ish. Let's say hypothetically, if the, how much do Fed, I know, obviously, they do impact interest rates on bonds, but for municipal bonds, how much of a difference are we talking about if, if they do cut rates and we missed out on that cut?
Well, it'll be priced in the market. I mean, it's, they've already priced in what the average rate cut could be, but CPI came out two weeks ago, it was a lot higher than it projected, so that may not happen at that timeframe.
So, what you're saying, it's not, there's not this magical, like, just ledge. It's the market kind of, kind of prices it in as they think it's happening. Okay.
That's correct. And we've seen, we've seen the municipal rates stay relatively flat for the last couple of weeks. They've increased a little bit after the CPI number, but it's been a slow, slow increase. So, really, I don't need anything on the bond issue, not just the reimbursement resolution , proof of that, so you can get started on some of those projects and reimburse yourself with bond funds, once we did sell the bonds, and then just a nod that this is the amount that you want to sell, and we'll get started on our side, and come back to you on, I believe it's March, the, March 25th with the results of the sale.
And I think we're, what did we calculate? What was the, the interest rate that we used for calculating some of these numbers?
We used 425. Right now, if we're to sell the market, 25-year, it'd be closer to 4%. So, we're, we're below that.
Four and a quarter, okay, yeah, okay.
I'd just like to point out that there's nothing on this list that I would put as, like, excessive or anything more than, most of this, to be honest, is kind of like fixing problems. I, I mean, it says right here, all pre-1980 pipes. Does that mean if it's post-1980, it's still considered good? That would put them at 43 years of age.
I think, Robert can answer this, but I think that when we issued the bonds, we had, or requested for the bonds, we had suggested that those could be actually taken care of in-house at a steadier pace and pay-as-you-go.
Versus the bulk replacement, correct?
Right.
Okay.
The water and sewer number that was approved by the voters is higher than that, if the council wanted to put more money into there that had been kind of earmarked for the ETJ. I mean, that is the council's opportu, or option. And same thing with the, the bridge, is that $2 million there that had been for the Ecuador Bridge. If, if we want to increase any of these numbers, council could do that up to the maximum threshold that the voters approved. This is just kind of where the staff felt we were coming in at.
And y'all do feel that this is sufficient?
You never know what you're gonna find in a pipe underground.
Out of curiosity, Austin, what, when, when we do have a sewer pipe issue, how often is it a pre-1980 pipe?
In the last two years, about 100% of the time.
Okay, then I think that's a very good line to draw.
And I speak from experience, you don't want it to break.
Oh, no, I agree.
You want to fix it ahead of time.
I, I just, I was just highlighting what I thought was the case, is that that, this is nailing the, the bulk, or it sounds like all of the issue lately.
And we can assume that you guys did put in some money in here for possibly finding things that you don't want under there, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
We're building some stuff into that, okay.
We, we think that there's, based on what we do know, we think there's some that is, we can cast in place pipe. Some of it's gonna have to be dug out and removed. We, we do think these are, are good numbers, to the best that we can estimate it, but they, some of these pipes are, are pretty old, and you never know what you're gonna find until you actually get into some of them, unfortunately.
Okay, unless there's any other questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Real quick, and going back to the 20-year versus 25, Isabel and, and Austin, y'all have looked at these and are more comfortable with the 25-year term versus the, the 20?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're kind of leaning on our financial advisor for these ones. Obviously, the, the debt service rate will have to increase, and, you know, that was part of the whole conversation all along, and so we feel the voters were well informed of that when they voted on this. So, whatever's gonna get us the best bang for the buck when we finance, similar to a house, and, you know, the mortgage financing, you know, how, what kind of term you do there. But, yeah, we're, we're leaning on our financial advisor right now to, to tell us what he believes is the best opportunity for the, for the city.
You'll probably see another 2 cent increase if we do 20-year, say 25-year, like that certain tax rate.
I would lean more personally to the 25, from what I've learned in, from, in finance.
Would you want all of this red?
No, just, just the resolution number would be.
Is that not what it is? I'm trying, I'm like, I'm happy to make a motion, but I can't see.
It's ordinance number 2024-06.
Resolution number 2024-08.
Am I in the wrong place?
Yeah. I make a motion that we approve resolution number 2024-08.
I second 2024-08.
Thank you. Y'all are right, I jumped ahead, sorry. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. Now, we move to item H5. Discuss and take appropriate action on ordinance number 2024-06, creating the general obligation bond series 2024 fund budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024. Austin Bleese, City Manager.
Mayor, I will point out that I, I did request if we could do that, all, the last one and this one and the same one, they said we couldn't, so. But this is just a budget amendment to create Fund 16, so we can track the revenue and expenses for this bond program. If the council some future time changes the numbers, we would have to come back and amend it.
If that's the case, and it's just part of the formality, can we go, is it okay if I go ahead and make the motion? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2024-06. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. That brings us to item number H6. Discuss and take appropriate action on the possible formation of a bond committee. Austin Bleese, City Manager.
Mayor and councillors, after the November 2023 bond election, the council expressed some interest in creating a bond committee made up of residents to look at the possibility of doing a bond referendum at the November 24 election. If the council wants to consider a committee, the staff would like some direction on that. If council wants to do that, we would advertise to residents, submit an application, and bring those to the city council in February or March. The February meeting is scheduled for the 12th, which means we'd only have two weeks for people to submit their applications, so we probably would want to do the March meeting at that point. If the only possible bond items to be explored are the pool and parks options, we have a lot of that work already done. The committee could help us refine the scope of the project, and we could use that to bring back a better cost estimate for the council to discuss. If there are other possible items the council may want to look at for bonds, the committee could vet those ideas as well. Staff does not have any specific projects in mind when we say that, but that is an option for council to think of. No formal action required by council tonight, just direction on if the council would like a bond committee, and if so, how the council would like us to proceed for the timing of the applications.
Okay, discussion amongst council.
I think we all want a bond committee, right? I mean, it's the best way to come up with, with the right solution.
It's a six, six-day month commitment, and I think that would be, yeah.
I, I like the idea of, okay, well, we know what, staff's done a good job of preliminary scoping, but I think the committee could give us better feedback on pros and cons of each of those features, and kind of outline maybe a better scope of, of something to go on ballot in November.
Do you think if you opened this up, like, tomorrow for applications, and the next week you got 15 people, that would be enough to go ahead and get you guys moving in February? Or do you think it needs to stay open in March?
My personal opinion is that we will not get applications that quickly. That, in the past, my experience has been it takes a while, and the, what's, the next JV Star has already gone to publication, so there won't be.
Gotcha. Okay, March is fine.
Unless, this seems pretty straightforward to me. I don't know if y'all need any other details for now, or just kind of getting a sense of, kind of, if we feel like we're on the right track?
No, I think, I think we're good. We'll advertise, we'll bring it back for March.
Sounds good. Okay, unless council's got anything else, we'll move on. Okay, moving on to H7. Consider resolution number 2024-09, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Little Kitchen HTX for concessionaire services for the Jersey Meadow Golf Course. Robert Bassford, Assistant City Manager.
Mayor, council, as the completion of the new golf course clubhouse approaches, staff solicited requests for proposals for concessionaire services in the new clubhouse. At the December 2023 meeting, council meeting, staff authorized the city manager to begin negotiating an agreement with Little Kitchen. Over the past month, we have worked with Little Kitchen to create a new concessionaire agreement that works better for the city and for them. Our agreement compares to previous agreements that we've had for concessionaire services with a few, few minor changes, and I've highlighted those here. This agreement is a five-year, nine-month agreement, ending December 31st, 2030, with four one-year extensions. The concessionaire will pay the city 12% of gross monthly sales for the first $50,000 earned, 4% for the next $25,000 earned, and then 7% of all gross monthly sales above $75,000. Concessionaire will continue to produce the turn food for more grab-and-go options for the golfers. There will still be three special events on a monthly basis. There will also continue to be special promotions for things like happy hour food specials in addition to the special events. Please see Exhibit A to the resolution for the full agreement details. Recommended act, action is motion to approve resolution number 2024-09.
All right, discussion. All right. Discussion amongst council.
I, for one, am excited about seeing what Little Kitchen can do. I think it's long-term and I like the renewal setup. I'll mention the, the catering in there. I, I first read that they were the exclusive caterer, but then I reread, that's inside the golf course clubhouse and not in the civic center area where, which was built in a way with a catering kitchen so people could bring in their own catering for golf tournaments or whatever. So I think it sounds, sounds great. One thing I did not see in there, and maybe Austin can address it, was a limitation on, or a direction towards what vendors they could use for meats, supplies, beverages, or anything. Do we, do we have any control over that?
No, sir. That's up to the vendor, to their discretion to decide what they think is going to sell best on the menu that they're going to put out there.
So council can't and have any influence over what they do?
That would be a major overstep of boundaries for the council. They, they should not do that.
So if they choose a local brewery, they're free to do that?
We are not controlling the vendors that they utilize.
Thank you, Austin. Any other discussion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024-09.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All of those in favor? All of those against?
Aye.
Any abstentions? The, what's the resolution ordinance? Resolution passes. That brings us to mayor and council comments. I'm going to start down on this end with Councilmember McCray.
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Singleton.
I have no comment.
Councilmember Wasson.
Happy New Year.
And Councilmember Shepherd.
I just want to wish Kirk Riggs, Chief Riggs, the best in his new adventure in life and we will miss you.
Mayor Pro Tim Mitchum.
I'm tired and I'm cold. Thank you.
Short and sweet. Happy New Year, everyone. Chief Riggs, we wish you well on your next adventure. Obviously, we'll still, we will still see you here and there as, before you leave, but, you know, we, we have appreciated having you here in our city. As I told you when you first told me you were, you were retiring, you were moving on, that I always, I, I feel like the mark of a good leader is that they believe an organization in better shape than they found it. And I can say that you have met that measure with flying colors. So thank you so much for everything.
Absolutely. Definitely.
Okay. With that, we are going to move into an executive session. City council is now going to retire to a closed session at 9:28 PM pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section 551.071, Consultations With Attorney in Connection With The Following Item Pursuant To The Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section 551.071, Consultations With Attorney, A Closed Meeting To Deliberate Information From A Business Prospect That The City Seeks To Locate In Jersey Village, Terrorist Number Two, And Economic Development Negotiations Including The Possible Purchase Exchange Or Value Of Real Property Related There Too. We will return to open session and continue with the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded.
The closed session was adjourned at 10:06 PM and no official action or vote was conducted during the closed session. That brings us to item in one, discuss and take appropriate action on items discussed in the executive session regarding information from a business prospect. The city ceased to locate in Jerseyville as church number two in economic development negotiations, including the possible purchase, exchange or value of real property related thereto. I believe there is no action to be taken. And yep, that's what it looks like to me. So therefore, meeting adjourned. Thank you everyone.